Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 24. If you're watching live on Monday, February 24, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can pick us up on Verizon FiOS Cable TV or Optimum and at PCTV76.org. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting as well as an archive of past meetings at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is on Monday, March 9 at 7:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00 p.m. and a regular session at 8:00. We began this month our work on the village budget for the fiscal year that begins June 1. And Eric Noreen, Mary Schwartz and her team in the Finest Department have been working with the department heads. We met tonight with the Police Department looking over their budget line by line. So Eric, we need to post the draft budget March something?
Yeah.
Third week of March, something like that.
The third week of March, correct.
So you will be seeing that ongoing stuff. If anyone's interested in the line-by-line discussion, we'll be meeting with various department heads. And when we have a draft budget, that'll be posted online at Pleasantville-NY.gov. And you can weigh in on it. As is always the case, we'll have a public hearing on the budget when it is actually posted in its final draft form. And then the Village Board needs to adopt that budget by the end of April. So that's our budget process. You'll be hearing more about that as we progress. One of the resolutions, if you pay attention to our agenda that you may have seen, is a resolution to authorize us to break the tax cap. That's a pro forma resolution that we have decided to adopt every year. That gives us the option to break the tax cap if the need should arise. It does not suggest that we by any means have decided to do so. Simply a matter of making sure the ducks are in a row if, in the course of the budget process, we feel like that is the responsible thing to do for the village's longstanding financial health. So don't read into that, the assumption that we're going anywhere near that. We may, we may not doing this every year. March 18th is a village election. We are sitting here in our last few meetings with two-term trustee Steve Lord. We will have more to say about two-term trustee Steve Lord as he finishes the end of his second term. Steve decided not to run again. Nicole is on the ballot to run for a second term. And Paul Alvarez, a new candidate, is on the ballot for the other position. So it's an uncontested election, but I do encourage folks to get out and vote on March 18th. Our elections are now run by the County Board of Elections and they assign polling places. And we think, Noreen, that there are three of them.
It's gonna be the same.
Think of it as a scavenger hunt.
Is that better, Shane? It's gonna be the same three polling places as last year. So we'll have three districts at the rec center at 48 Marble. There'll be two districts at the Lutheran Church and that's at, what is that, 197 Manville Road. And then one district up at the Hayes-Hose Firehouse at 134 Bedford Road. You should be getting the information in the mail from the county, but once we do have it official again, we'll post it on the website like we did last year.
At Pleasantville-NY.gov. So just to be clear, you don't have the option of voting in any of those three places. You have to vote in the location that's assigned to your district based on the postcard you'll get in the mail from the County Board of Elections.
Yeah. And presumably there'll be a way to locate your polling place online as well. And we can put that on our Facebook page. And perhaps we can put it on our website as well in case people are confused about polling locations.
So that is a village election on March 18th. Two trustee positions and there are no other offices up for election. In the year following, the mayor and the other two trustees are up for reelection or reelection. So a couple of other announcements to make. I was not at the meeting two weeks ago for anyone who happened to watch because I was in Albany at the New York Conference of Mayors Legislative Conference where we met as a group and talked about the lay of the land in Albany. The Westchester Municipal Officials Association, of which I am this year the president, met with the entire delegation from the Senate and the Assembly in Westchester. And we went over a list of our leading concerns. And then on the flip side of that same sheet, a list of concerns that we would like to see them address. It is fair to say that in a year when the state is looking at a something like $6 billion budget gap, a big chunk of it generated by overruns in the Medicaid budget, that the prospects for increased support for our local community are not at all good. Indeed, as it stands, what do we get? $50,000 in state aid, give or take something like $50,000 is our total state aid. Not that we're looking to lose it, which they threatened to take last year. But we do have a long list of concerns. And among those concerns are some shared by all 45 cities, towns and villages in Westchester. One of them in particular is the cost and the impact of the recent changes in the rules for discovery in criminal cases, which have established a very short time window for all of the various elements of the evidence to be collected, distributed back to the District Attorney's Office and then made available to the defense attorney. In some cases, it's now a 15-day window. That means that all the local police departments and justice courts have to get that stuff all together probably within six or seven days to get to the DA's office. And then the DA's office has to hand it over to the defense.
That, sorry, Peter, that's of charging or of the crime being committed?
Of the charging. So at any rate, it's a highly contentious matter. And there were certainly lots of good reasons to try to speed things up. And everybody, obviously, I think is in agreement that the defense ought to have access to all this material. But it has created a very, very, very severe problem, especially in places that have a lot of court cases. I can report some of the bigger cities in Westchester believe that fulfilling these timeframes is likely to require as many as four or five additional full-time employees. In our case, the effects are not quite so severe, but significant nonetheless. So I think it is likely, pending the discussion of this board, that we will pass a resolution that is rather similar to one that's being passed by boards like ours all across New York State, which isn't to take a policy position about the issue, but simply to say either we need more money from the state in order to achieve these goals or the deadlines need to be stretched out a little bit in order to make it more reasonable to achieve them. So more on that later. I am gonna be doing a PCTV show with our good folks at PCTV in their new studio with the green screen. Get over there and take a look on Lane Street. And folks who are interested in the subject of the life of Albany and its impact on the Village of Pleasantville, I encourage you to weigh in. Couple of other notes to make. We had an emergency planning meeting with the folks at Con Edison, meeting with us in an effort to make certain that the village administration and Con Ed were all on the same page in a circumstance where there's a severe outage. And it was a useful meeting, always frustrating in a few ways, but I would like to give a shout-out to Con Ed for the very, very good work I think they have done to try to improve the online services. And those online services include not only stuff that will be available to us and our police and fire, but also online services available to all of you as constituents. So with that, and we'll post this up on the website and we're messaging it out through Facebook as well. But the folks at Con Ed have a couple of notes they wanna make sure everybody in the public is aware of. And I'll just read this one paragraph. "It's important that we have a record of everyone who uses electrically operated life support equipment or has medical hardships so that we can contact them in an emergency." To learn more and to complete the survey, they offer a link. You'll see that on our website and in the social media postings. But you can also achieve the same goal by calling 1-800-752-6633. You'll need to provide your account number to keep the records current. Each year, they'll send a letter to anyone in this circumstance asking you to recertify that there are specific needs that would be of special concern in the event of a power outage. Add to that that we had a more extended conversation than we've had in the past about the possibility of gas outages. No one is anticipating that and Con Ed has not ever had any significant gas outage in Westchester County. But there was one, I think, in Rhode Island and another rather significant one in Massachusetts. You may recall there was an explosion somewhere and it caused disruption of the gas service. So the two services are very, very different. Gas service is much, much harder to repair and to start up again. It involves coming into everybody's house to turn off the valve and then coming into everybody's house before it's turned back on again to make certain that pilot lights and the like have lit up again. So at any rate, much more to be said, but we'll post the various links online. And those links also show you the outage map that some of you may already be familiar with. The Con Ed smart meters that are being installed in various places around the community eventually will give Con Edison the capacity to know if your house is out even if you don't call. But they reiterated that's not the case throughout the community at this point. And if you're out, you should call. So we'll post all that stuff online. Food scraps still rocking and rolling? You wanna?
Um, Noreen, I'm gonna pass this one to you because I feel like you're on the front line.
What we're hoping is that Noreen and Eric's office will have fewer green buckets piled on the side because all of you have come to buy them for $25, which is a great deal.
We're close to taking a refill.
Yeah.
In our office.
Yes. We've sold 135 to date.
Yep.
So we still have them available, $25. And that's the starter kit, which is not required to participate, but it's a great system that's been tested and tried. It's a countertop size. And then the larger bucket is as you accumulate your week's worth of food scraps. And once again, the yard is open on Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00 to accept the food scraps.
We're hoping we can maybe eventually expand.
Yes.
Well, it's really quite a good program and I've been doing it in my house. It is surprising, even if you try to be responsible about how much stuff gets thrown out, that it is quite a bit of stuff and quite a bit of weight. We pay for garbage when we deliver it to the county contract side of Charles Pointe and Peace Guild by weight. So every pound we don't deliver there is a little bit of a savings for us. And of course, wet food scraps don't burn as well and they require more fuel and energy to burn. So it's a great story. So had a couple of mishaps from Westchester County. At the moment, there is no cause for alarm according to the County Health Department about the coronavirus. But if anyone is interested about Westchester and its specific planning for coronavirus in the event that it should become a local problem, you can go to health.westchester.gov/2019-novel-coronavirus. I'm guessing if you go to health.westchester.com, that'll get you close enough and you'll find the links. There is also a New York State Department of Health hotline with experts available to answer questions. So blessedly, it has not had a significant impact on Westchester County, but out of an abundance of caution, the county has put in place the mechanism to manage it. So you may have heard in the past, we're in a, at the beginning of a project to put permanent lights on the backfield at Parkway. These are not the huge towers that we have on the front, but simply much more modest light towers that will allow us, light poles that will allow us to avoid this fall renting the gas power generators that we've used for nighttime lighting for the high school and the rec program. Practices which start to occur after dark. So that project's rolling along?
Yeah. The weather has been quite kind to us, so been able to make some progress. Should have everything wrapped up probably about the spring, if not early summer.
So that project is tandem with a project to construct a blacktop path that will connect the bridge from the Henkel's parking lot that we have access to use for sporting events, straight across from the bridge to the handicap ramp that is the access route to the new bleachers. And then behind the bleachers, all the way over to the existing asphalt plaza in front of the new bathroom building. So that will give us not only handicapped access from Village Lane on the one side to Hover Street on the other, but also, especially in wet weather, cleaner route for folks to get back and forth. So thanks to Jeff Akonam, our Superintendent of Public Works, and his crew for shouldering the load on a lot of that. We do have some outside services, but as always, Jeff finds lots of ways to save all of you money by using our own crew. So all of that's good stuff. Anybody else have other announcements to make?
Nope.
All right. With that, we have a public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing on introductory local law number one of 2020 to amend Chapter 173, Article 7, Section 60 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning parking on Meadow Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the public hearing. Eric, you wanna just describe in summary?
Sure. So this parking restriction would be located on Meadow Lane east of Saratoga, measuring points between 255 feet and 357 feet east from the intersection of Saratoga Avenue. It's roughly the area of the service entrance to the golf course, the country club. And yeah, tonight we have a public hearing. And then if the board decides to close it, they can adopt the local law.
So this is the result of various concerns of some folks who live in the area as well as discussion with the country club about their back gate and the like. I think it's a relatively modest change and one that I think should significantly improve things. Anyone wish to comment in any way on this subject?
Do you need my support or not?
I don't think we do. So no further comment. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. How about Resolution Number 41? Nicole.
Okay.
Okay, quick.
All right, sorry. Whereas introductory local law one of 2020 has been introduced to amend Chapter 173, Article 7, Section 60 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville seeks to prohibit parking at all times on the north side of Meadow Lane in the location measured between the points 255 feet and 357 feet east from the intersection of Saratoga Avenue. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law one of 2020 was held and closed on February 24, 2020. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts local law one of 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? This obviously is the follow-up to the brief public hearing we just held. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Forty-two, Steve.
Whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes changed, charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions. And whereas the state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect from unforeseen financial circumstances. Whereas state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must be already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees prior to the adoption of the current year's budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, March 23, 2020, at 8:00 p.m., Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, to hear comments on introductory local law two of 2020 overriding the property tax cap. Now, just for the record, as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the year, this is pro forma. This is just to give us the option should we need it. This is not actually passing anything that has anything to do with overriding now.
Right. That is true. Is there a second?
Second.
So I think Steve was clear. All in favor?
Sorry. Kinda did it ahead of time.
That's fine, no problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Forty-three, Joe.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on February 10, 2020. And the minutes are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes? As I mentioned, that was a meeting I missed because I was in Albany, but I wanted to remind folks or maybe Nicole would like to do so about our Pleasantville posts.
Pleasantville posts, right. I knew there was something. My daughter grew sick at me up all last night. I'm not quite as sharp as I should be. So yes. So as I stated last time, we have been, over the duration of my tenure as trustee, working on improving communications. And in this day and age, that means communicating through different media because people get their information in different ways. So our latest improvement is a village newsletter. This is, and our second edition is now available on our website, the village website. There's a link on our Facebook page as well. And if you would rather have something concrete in your hands, you can find printed copies at Village Hall. I believe there's some at the senior center, hopefully at the library by now as well. It highlights in particular an interview with our building inspector, Robert Hughes, about development going on in the village. There's discussion about volunteer opportunities, about the Manville Road project and the 2020 census.
Thank you. So Pleasantville-NY.gov. You can always go and pick up a link to that newsletter. But in the left-hand column, if you subscribe to news, it brings up a window. You get a bunch of options you can choose. One of them is general news. You can also subscribe to get an automatic email of the agendas of the Village Board, Planning Commission, Zoning Board, Architectural Review Board. You can sign up for whatever it is that interests you. But if you sign up for the basic news category, this PDF newsletter will appear in your mailbox automatically and you will not have to go out and seek it. So a bunch of folks have expressed some concern about the fact that so far, we haven't decided to print it and mail it to every household. That's certainly something that we're talking about. It's an expensive venture. Costs some thousands of dollars every time we do it to print and mail to the entire village. So our initial effort was to get it out electronically and also to have some paper copies for folks who wanted it. But it would please me no end if it also generated increased subscription to the village news site. So we're looking at a bunch of different ways in which we can improve our throughput. But as everybody also knows, there have been a bunch of development proposals that people have had opinions about pro and con. If you subscribe to the Planning Commission Agenda, you can see when things are happening. And if they're of no interest, just delete it. If they are of interest, all of the backup for all those applications on any of the boards is available online as it is for our board. You'll click through and appear in Novus Agenda. It is the most beautiful user interface, but literally all of the stuff except anything that's confidential is available to you in your home. The same stuff we're looking at on our computers and same is true for zoning and planning. So I really, really, really encourage you to sign up for those agendas that interest you and certainly for news to get the Pleasantville Posts newsletter. More on that as we continue. It's a work in progress and we're happy to get anybody's comments about how we can do better. We've already gotten some comments and have had the good folks at Con Court and Communications helping us as well. So stay tuned.
I'll just, just a little footnote on that. I had somebody who doesn't live in the village proper, but who lives in the school district recently say, you know, that she felt a little bit left out. She wants to get news and information as well. And of course, anybody who lives in Mount Pleasant is welcome to subscribe to any of these means.
Indeed, anyone in the world is welcome.
Indeed.
So I know, I know a bunch of folks who used to live here and no longer do, but just like to have a sense for what's going on. And what we sent out so far on the news thing tended to be, you know, agendas and notices about deadlines for paying property taxes and the like. But now we're setting out something that has a quite a bit nicer front end. And I think as we evolve it, it's being thoughtfully crafted. Nicole's been heavily, heavily involved. Thoughtfully crafted to try to focus on stuff that's of interest. And so last point, and Nicole already mentioned it, the 2020 census is up and running. And it is really important for all of us that everybody get counted. There is a disturbing statistic nationally that I saw the other day that as many as one out of three Americans does not trust the census and therefore is disinclined to respond to it. But it's a statistic that County Planning gave us when Norbert Droid came here and made a presentation, that there is solid reason to think Westchester in the 2010 census might have been undercounted by as many as 100,000 people. And based on the federal monies that are apportioned based on population, every single human body accounts for about $2,500 per year. So that is millions and millions and millions of dollars lost to the county through a census undercount in addition to the risk of loss of congressional representation. So really, really, really trying to get everybody involved in the count and get everybody to respond. It is not a Trojan horse for the government to come in in other ways. It is simply an effort to figure out how many people are here. So that was a long segue. I think we need a second. How many minutes or did we get one already?
We already have one.
We did.
Trust you, Lord.
Go, Lord.
That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. David.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees in support of the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department's annual parade on Friday, May 29, 2020, authorizes that no parking signs will be posted with restrictions in effect for Friday, May 31, 2019, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the following locations. Memorial Plaza, Roma Avenue from Bedford Road to Clinton Street. Clinton Street from Roma Avenue to Martling Avenue. Sunnyside Avenue from Bedford Road to Clinton Street. Martling Avenue from Bedford Road to Clinton Street. Guyan Street from Manville Road to Bedford Road. Orchard Street from Manville Road to Bedford Road. Bedford Road from Academy Street to Marble Avenue. Marble Avenue from Bedford Road to Manville Road. Manville Road from Marble Avenue to Grove Street. Manville Road from Grove Street to Great Oak Lane. Grove Street from Manville Road to Edgewood Avenue. Edgewood Avenue from Grove Street to Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue from Manville Road to Edgewood Avenue. And the parking spaces at the intersection of Manville Road and Rebecca Lane. And further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the police chief to tow all vehicles violating this temporary parking restriction and to cancel the event due to adverse weather conditions or safety conditions. And further resolved, the Pleasantville Fire District shall provide proof of insurance for the event. And now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the parade permit application from the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department to conduct a parade on Friday, May 29, 2020.
What was those streets again?
Manville Road.
We, we added that level of detail because we were told that people didn't know. So we tried to put the whole parade.
Now they still don't know, but we can point to where we did.
I do think, I do think we need a second. Did we get a second?
Second.
So here is my moment to report that I think the Fire Department Parade is one of the great, great, great days in the Village of Pleasantville. And on Friday, May 29, I need to be elsewhere because my wife is being anointed as a fellow in her professional organization, which is a high honor and a one that, it takes a lot to keep me from the Fire Department Parade, but that would do it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. I sadly am gonna miss that possibly for the first time. Twenty, forty-five, Nicole.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the salary increase for Brendan Dwayne to $59,372 CSEB Labor CDL Step 1 effective March 2020. Oh, March 7, sorry, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as per our CSA contract, once a laborer obtains a CDL, Commercial Driver's License, they automatically get a bump up.
Oh, okay.
Glad to hear that Brendan has achieved that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Forty-six, Steve.
Hold on, I lost my.
authorized village administrator to sign MOU with Pleasantville Strong?
Yeah. No, I got it. I just needed to get to the right window. Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the memorandum of understanding agreement with Pleasantville Strong, establishing the responsibilities of the Village of Pleasantville as the grantee legal applicant and Pleasantville Strong as the coalition for purposes of federal grant administration. And the MOU is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
MOU is memorandum of understanding, just in case that acronym eluded you, which is likely.
FYI, the MOU.
As lots of you know, Pleasantville Strong is a coalition that involves lots of community groups. The school district is involved. The village, as you have already heard, is the, is the financial administrative entity. And our responsibilities include providing the coalition with office space, compiling financial reports, providing accounting services, distributing payroll pay and voices for the, maintain records. services to distribute payroll, pay invoices, maintain records pertaining to costs and expenses. Those costs and expenses are paid to us out of the federal grant, but we provide the administrative services to make that all work. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Joe?
Number forty-seven. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments as listed below. From the general fund, $3,571 from central technology equipment to central technology consulting services, $10,500 from contingent to central technology consulting services, and $1,636 from contingent to fiscal agent fees. And also from the general fund, $7,887 from state aid court facilities to court facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the $3,500 and change was for A1, our IT consultant, who was helping us troubleshoot a couple of issues in court. And we received a rather big bill. So we actually had work on the servers downstairs with the PD and then the credit card machine at court. The $10,500 is for the cybersecurity audit that we will be undertaking and we've previously discussed. That's with O'Connor Davies. They'll also, part of that audit, help us get in compliance with the New York Shield Act, which is the New York state legislation that oversees cybersecurity for private and public entities. So they've.
Which, and our responsibilities have been increased in order to safeguard that data.
Yes, yes. So that'll be a nice service that they tucked into that contract. And the $1,636 was our fiscal advisors, which was related to our banning that we did for the trucks and vehicles. And then the revenue is the JCAP grant that the justice court has received that will go into purchasing the trustee Lord new board chairs.
This is, the timing is cruel. The timing is query.
Yes, really. Just in time.
Well, we'll give you an old one on your way.
Oh, good. Thank you.
We're going to choose the oldest one. So the backstory there, Steve, has been vocal and rightly so about the, about the declining condition of the chairs that we and the other boards that use this table sit on. A few of them used to have sort of a glossy look and now have a suede look because the.
The most charitable way to describe it. They're falling apart.
So it's all right. As long as you don't lean back too far, then you create a worker's comp case. At any rate, it is, it is really a cruel timing that these will arrive. So when they come, we're going to invite you back.
And I'd like to just sit in the.
Yes. And we'll, we'll take a picture.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Forty-eight.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated February 24th, 2020, for fiscal year 2020, covering check numbers 96169 to 96284 as listed below. From the general fund, $275,010.80. From the water fund, $38,652.62. From the capital fund, $119,788.97. Refuge fund, $27,074.48. From the trust fund, $7,994.50. For a total of $468,521.37.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on the check register?
What's from the capital fund?
I believe that's the second payment.
The truck.
The second payment for the dump truck.
Yeah, it was in, yeah, two pieces.
Right. They had found a deficiency in it and ordered new parts.
In the truck?
Yeah.
On warranty, I hope.
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to, there, forty-nine, Nicole?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the donation to the Clinton Street Center from Andrew Tobin in the amount of $50.
Is there a second?
Second.
A very nice thing to get from someone who actually does not live anywhere near here. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fifty, Steve?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the revocable license agreement of Pleasantville Lofts LLC with regards to a portion of the Cooley Street Municipal Parking Lot adjacent to the development project at 70 Memorial Plaza, subject to revisions deemed necessary by the village attorney.
Is there a second?
Attached.
Second.
So Eric, you want to describe?
Sure.
This is essentially an arrangement at the, what we call the Lane Plumbing Lot to allow the construction work to go on and?
That's right. So when, when they move on to the next phase of actually constructing the building, they need more access to the site. So they're going to move their construction fence over to basically be on top of the current entrance and exit to the Cooley Street Lot. That's closest to Bedford Road. There'll still be room for pedestrians to have access to Memorial Plaza. In order for them to temporarily use our property, we need a license agreement in place. And that's what this does. We'll have to shift over the entrance and exit. There'll still be two entrances and exits. I think we, we end up losing in this condition about four to six parking spaces, but we'll still be able to accommodate all permit holders.
So again, this is a temporary arrangement for the duration of this phase of the construction.
Correct.
And it has been vetted and continues to be by the village attorney.
That's right.
Have they moved any faster because of the weather now than they were expecting to?
Yeah, I mean, they're still, they're still outcropping some of the rock, believe it or not. But they are eager to move on to the next phase.
All right. All in favor of resolution fifty?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fifty-one, Joe?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids for janitorial services, June 1, 2020 through May 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is our biennial venture.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fifty-two, David?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village anti-harassment and discrimination policy to include further review and approval at the village annual organizational meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we found the need to enhance our anti-discrimination or harassment policy. So we worked with the village's labor attorney to develop a more refined one. That's before you tonight. We had previously discussed this. One, one item of note was posting information of the village council. So there's a reporting structure, but if an employee or a board member or a part-time employee wants to report an incident of harassment or discrimination, they can go to their department head or the village administrator. But if either party is involved in some way, the default is to go to the village council. So we will post that information in every village facility, who to contact. And we can update that annually in case the village moves on to a different labor attorney. And we envision this policy being approved at the annual meeting every year. So it provides us the opportunity to do that.
Sounds good.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fifty-three, Nicole?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the conditional hiring of Christopher Mance as a full-time recreation supervisor, CSEB Group Six Step One, at a salary of $58,148, pending provisional appointment to the position by Westchester County Commissioner of Human Resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this recreation supervisor pending appointment by the county to a provisional hire would essentially lead and run Panther Club. So replacing in kind Mindy in a way. It is a more senior position, which we think being responsible for Panther Club rates in the long run. And Mr. Mance went through a hiring process with Matt Trainer, the Recreation of Parks and Rec, and has come up with being the most capable and candidate with the best experience for the job.
And, and a very strong employment as well as educational record. So.
Correct.
All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Welcome, Christopher Mance. Delighted to have you on the team. And then lastly, number fifty-four, which I caution all of us, refers to an employee who ought not be identified nor should the circumstances of their health be identified.
Right.
Shall I go?
Sure.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Village Police Benevolent Association, the PBA, for a side letter agreement to facilitate the donation of the PBA members' accumulated sick hours for the one-time benefit of employee number 99076. And further resolved, side letter agreement terms will be subject to review and approval by the village attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a circumstance where, subject to the terms of a negotiation with CSEA, oh, I'm sorry, with the PBA, our police union, individuals who have additional sick time that they have not used will be given a one-time opportunity to donate some days, up to five, on behalf of a specific colleague. So.
Right. And this side letter is the mechanism to allow for that.
Right. It is not a change in our contract. It is simply a side letter for this specific circumstance. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That was the last of our regular agenda items. Any further comment from board members, new business, or comment from the public? You're it, Abby. You're the public.
Yeah.
No comments.
No comment.
All right. With that, is there a motion to go into executive session on matters of real property and personnel?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. Thank you for your attention. We look forward to seeing you on Monday, March 9.